Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00. That means it's time for the first City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission meeting of 2023, and it didn't say 2022. So I'll officially call the meeting to order, and we'll start with a roll call, as we always do.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Diker?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
And the agenda for this evening, we have two public hearings and a discussion item. Anything on hold, anything new? We good to go? Okay, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chair, I will move to accept the agenda as printed.
Okay.
Ms. Charles second.
And I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus, thank you. Minutes from December 7th. Any additions, corrections, changes? Are we good? Good for the official minutes? Okay, I'll take a...
Ms. Charles, motion to approve the December 7th, 2022 minutes.
All right.
Mr. Charles second.
And I've got a second, and we'll do that by general consensus, thank you very much. Okay, this evening, we have two public hearings and a discussion item. And the Cliff Notes on our public hearings, we will ask the applicant to make their presentation, and then staff will make their presentation. We will open the floor to comments from anyone who wishes to speak, either for or against or simply ask questions. Once that is done, we'll see if there's any written input. Then we will close the public hearing, and we will discuss it among ourselves and hopefully come up with a vote and an answer. So, let's start out with our first one.
This is case number PC 23-1. It's an ASRA detailed site plan on an application filed by Skilken Gold Real Estate Development, 4270 Morris Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43230. The applicant requests an administrative site plan review and approval, it's an ASRA, for 1.449 acres of land to construct a 6,139 square foot convenient store and gas station. The property is located at the northeast corner of North Fairfield Road and Beaver View Drive, further described as Book 5, Page 7, Parcel 35, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, my name's David Bruckelmeier, I'm with Sheets. Skilken Gold, Kareem A. Mirror is on his way, I think he's running a little late because of some traffic. So I'll go ahead and speak for him if you don't mind. Again, Sheets is a company that started in the 50s, and truly Sheets is based as a convenience store and restaurant. I know everybody says we're a fuel station, but really, when you look at our business, we are a restaurant. We do a huge number of made-to-order offerings. They are premium, when you look at what's offered at other convenience stores. When you look at our offering inside, just the overall number and quality of what we offer, it's very high. If you've gotten a chance to visit one of our stores, you may have seen the great finishes that we provide, the excellent cleaning, just, that's what we're known for. It's a good, clean place to stop that's safe and friendly. So, I don't know how many questions you have for me about our business, but if there's anything I can answer, I'd love to.
Thank you, I'm sure there will be, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PC 23-1. It's the Sheets Gas Station and Convenience Store Administrative Site Plan Review Approval Process, or ASRA. Just for overview, an ASRA is very similar to the specific site plan stage of a PUD, where we're reviewing the overall site and architecture to get recommendation for City Council. Specifically, the applicant's requesting approval of a detailed site plan for a 6,000-square-foot gas station/convenience store on about 1.5 acres. Again, as the clerk read out, the property is located at the northeast corner of Beaver View and North Fairfield Road. So the property is located pretty much in central Beaver Creek, just south of the intersection of Dayton Xenia and North Fairfield Road, just north of 35. And you can see here is the existing site of the 1.5 acres. Currently, there's a 14,000-square-foot building, which is about 120 feet back from North Fairfield Road and about 50 feet back from Beaver View Drive. They have 75 parking spaces and currently two access points, which, I don't know if that's gonna work. Yeah, there it is. They have one access point here that is on the existing Kroger back entry, and then they have another access point, which is about 75 feet from this intersection of North Fairfield and Beaver View. The property is Zone B3, which is general business district, which is one of our more intense commercial zoning districts. Convenience stores, gas stations, fuel centers, restaurants, all those are permitted within B3 zoning districts. So what they're requesting is in line with the current zoning code. To the south is the PUD 95-5, this is a bowling alley, Beaver View Bowling. To the north is a multi-tenant retail, which is part of the PUD 479, and then there's a standalone Tim Hortons coffee shop, just along this northern property line. It's quite a bit of a drop, it's about six feet or so from the Tim Hortons site down to this site. So there is a large retaining wall that's on the northern edge of the site. And to the east is, again, this access point, and there's a kind of a big parking lot that acts as overflow for the Beaver View Bowling Center. Seen here is the site plan, and this kind of gives you a better, easier view of the proposed primary structure and then the fuel canopy that sits to the west of that. In terms of building setbacks, they meet all the building setbacks on B3 districts, both for the canopy and the primary structure. They're proposing two access points, one being, in citing this site and discussing this with the applicant, we had them move these access points as far away from this intersection as possible. There's some grading issues, there'd be a retaining wall dislocation that's between a foot and three or four feet around the corner. And then from this point up to the site, it's another good three or four feet, but they do meet all the requirements we have in the code for slopes. But we did have them move them away from the intersection as far as possible. This access point would be a full access point with left out, right out, and full in. And then this proposed access point will have full in, which is still a good 50 feet further from their existing full-in access point, but only have right out, so that we're not having people trying to cross lanes of traffic as much as possible here. Around, to the east of the building, there is a drive-through window, and as stated in the staff report, this isn't a typical drive-through window, according to the applicant, where the most of their business, instead of a traditional drive-through where people come up and order, they're saying that about 80% of their business is done by pre-order, you come up, tell them you're there, and you just pick it up and go. So it's much quicker than a traditional drive-through. But they do meet, in the zoning code for drive-through establishments, they're required to have a minimum of five parking spaces, and you can see the five cars here. So the fifth space is about at this location, and one thing that we added was a condition, let me get to that, where just in case there is more than the five cars, instead of cars naturally going out to the intersection and out on Beaver View, just in this general location, you know, a striping to help encourage cars to stack up to the west rather than to the south. The final design of that, you know, we'll run that through the engineering department, and their engineers make, see what's feasible to make sure they can get around this corner without that being a pretty tight corner. But there's a condition that requires striping similar to this in that general location. In terms of parking, when we look for parking in commercial developments, we analyze the use, and since this is not an all-gas station or all-restaurant, there is multiple uses in there, we had them submit a floor plan and analyze that floor plan. And based on the square footage of 740 square feet of restaurant, about 1,600 square feet of general retail and fuel service retail, they also have some outdoor seating, so all those kind of play into the calculation on how you get to the off-street parking. So based on the calculation, they're required to have 32 parking spaces, they show 43, so they do meet the minimum requirements for that. So no concerns with that one. Seen here is the landscape plan, you can see they show good landscaping around the perimeter of the site in terms of around the parking lot, and they also show landscaping behind by the drive-through and then up at the front corner where the outdoor seating area is. We did add a condition that, to help soften the building, because it's a brick patio around the base of the building, in order to add some additional landscaping near the front west corner of the building to add some planters out there. But the final number and design of that will be approved by staff at the final stage or the zoning permit stage. Seen here is the architectural elevations of the building. You can see a majority of the building is red brick, and then they have a brown stone base veneer, and they have that same brown stone that encapsulates the entry points to, on the, on this front elevation, on the south side of the elevation. So this front main entrance and then this other southern entrance. They have a third entrance on the west elevation, but no brick veneer on that elevation. You can see that they do on most of the windows, especially on the front and the, on the west and the south side, they have the awnings over the windows, the red awning. And then they do carry that architectural feature to the south and west side, or south and north, or north and east side of the building that faces both the retaining wall and the drive-through. The canopy, which will be on a, you can see it's on a stone base that matches the same stone as the window, so it'll be mounted on that stone base. It's approximately seven, or 21 feet, 20 feet to the top of the canopy roof, and then it's got a 15 and 1/2 foot clearance. So it does meet the requirements of the fire department to make sure that they can get in underneath there, and if the fire truck can get under there, then most every other truck can get under there. So they do meet those standards. In terms of signage, they have a 27-square-foot Sheets logo sign on the south and the west elevations, and then also this made-to-order sign on the west elevations. So they do meet the square footage requirements for B3 zoning districts in terms of wall signage, and then they do show a five-foot brick-mounted ground sign. The location hasn't been shown on the site plan yet, but we added a condition, the final location be approved by staff, and when we get to that location, we'll make sure that it's sit back, so it's not causing a line of sight issue for people coming in and out of the site. There are 17 conditions in your resolution for your consideration, based on the overall improvement of the site, you know, the aesthetic improvement of the site, it's an older building now, and this'll spruce up the site with a new building, new landscaping, new pavement. The zoning is appropriate for this application, so staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thanks.
Thank you, the usual, very exhaustive report, thanks. Since this is a public hearing, I will open it to anyone who wishes to ask questions, speak in favor, against, or whatever. Don't be shy. Last chance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Did we get any written input? No written input. Okay, gentlemen, I'm gonna start on my right tonight.
Just one question for staff. I'm not sure if this is more the city's purview or the applicant's, but on the entrance off of Beaver View, is there a way to get like a sign that says like, "Don't block the intersection"? Because I know people, you know, in that left turn lane, it backs up quite a ways there. So, just a thought there, I don't know if that's the city's purview or the applicant's to have a sign there.
Yeah, I mean, it'd probably end up being the city. We'd want it out in the right-of-way so that they could see it, and if it's out in the right-of-way, then the city will have to do that. But that's something we can talk to the engineer about and see what we can do to get that.
Okay, that was all I had.
All right, my turn.
Yes?
You know, I've got questions about turning.
Sure.
So my biggest concern actually is not really Fairfield Road, it's the Beaver View. As you're coming out of that Kroger, and then we're pulling out of that, and they're making opposing lefts, because of the way the road curves, is there a sight line? Are they able to maintain sight lines on each other as they're turning against each other, or are we gonna have guys pulling out blind? That's my concern with the elevation change and the curvature of the road back to the north.
Yeah, the way we had them do the landscaping, you see it's not out, it's hard to point with this laser pointer, but you can see that the driveway is vacant of landscaping there at that entry point. So you'd be able to see coming out of the Kroger, because it's just gonna be grass. It's not such a tall hill, it'll be gradually sloped, the wall's gonna be down here at the southwest corner, not at the southeast corner. So you'll be able to see up, when you're coming down to Beaver View, you'll be able to see up, I'll beat your right, but you'll be able to see up and behind you.
As you're coming out of like the Kroger, the back behind there, I can't remember what that little road is back behind there, but that's what I'm talking about, where those are gonna turn opposing to each other, and is there gonna be an issue? Because it's kind of a half-blind corner, as it is right now, just coming out of that Kroger, that whole like back parking lot, so...
Yeah, and both them and here will have a stop sign, so they'll have to, you know, follow the rules and the law of, you know, traffic, who's got the right-of-way of pulling out first. You'll be able to see, and I'll make sure that that tree there that's to the south of the eastern parking lot area is back far enough so you can see out too. It'll be a shade tree, so the first six feet's just gonna be, or the first three, four, or five feet'll be a stump anyways. I mean, it's small.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so I'm assuming the engineer has physically gone out there and looked like, hey, when we look here and traffic's gonna come this way?
Yeah, our engineer reviewed all the grading and all the plans for that, and, you know, very good.
Okay, and then I wanted to just review the stacking. Is there anything that we can do a little bit more impactful than just, please do this? I'm sure you're all aware Fairfield Road was, it was backed up so bad from a car wash that, I mean, they shut down traffic on Fairfield Road, and we thought we put in plenty of stacking, but obviously there's not near enough stacking over there. Kroger gets backed up right now to that light, so I'm just concerned, as always, about the congestion on a corner and us not providing any kind of infrastructure to kind of support it, and that's just kind of my concern there is, I mean, that's not a lot of stacking. It's just, it's not a lot of stacking at all. So I mean, yeah, I mean, is there, is there a way to read, yeah, it just, it really concerns me, the stacking, because pretty much every new thing that we've put in that's been high-volume, we get, ends up stacking out in the street, and we have to redo the stacking plan. And this one feels like it's just kind of the same thing that we've been seeing with all the stacking plans.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, this one is a little different, because it is an ASRA straight zoning district, so we're working with the applicant. We had some suggestions, and they had some suggestions, and based on the discussion and the fact that there's, they stated that, you know, they have a quicker, a lot quicker turnaround than a general, a normal drive-through, plus the requirement is for five, and they have five, just to get to that, where they show that last car there, and really you would need to have four or five more cars if you wanted to get back out onto the roadway. So with the painting, you know, to encourage people to stack that way rather than south, I'm fairly, I'm comfortable, you know, that they'll be able to meet the stacking requirements. We can add a caveat and a condition that if there is cars stacked, you know, if there's ever, you know, an excessive amount of cars that are stacked out on the road, we can, we can require them to do, you know, additional marking or even some sort of signage in the middle of the parking lot, you know, we can, we can...
Yeah, and I think with Flying Ace, didn't we do something similar where they actually had to be responsible for like providing traffic control if it did spill out into the road? Didn't I? I felt like we did something like that.
Yeah, I think it was worded so that if it became a regular occurrence, not, I know today was a warm day after salt for the last two weeks, so I'm sure that it was overly busy today.
Oh, yeah, well, it was like two days after Christmas, that's for the next three days, they spilled out all the way onto both roads, so, yeah, I mean, if we could add something like that in there, I think that would make me a lot more comfortable, just to be responsible, not the city having to get a phone call and then they come in and do something. So, yeah, if we could put something like that in there, I think that would, that would help to ease my concerns. Other than that, I think it's a great project, good use of space, and awesome.
Appreciate it.
I think Nick took a lot of the questions that I was going to have, but let me just ask a few. This area doesn't fall within an impact district, correct?
Correct.
For the access point on Fairfield Road, have we thought about making that a right-in, right-out? Because I think everybody who's spoken so far tonight has said that the traffic on Fairfield is bad, and heading north on Fairfield, traffic is always backed up in that center lane. So if we're going to be having people heading south and turning left into Sheets...
Yeah, there's a, there's a left turn lane that they would be pulling left into the site from. It's a left turn lane for the light.
Okay. Usually, so what I usually see is people, I think there's three lanes heading, or two lanes heading north in that turn lane, and people stop in all three. So that's my concern, I just don't want traffic to be backed up, and, more than it is, that's because congestion right there is bad as it is with a building that is vacant after hours, after business hours. So, and, so I don't know if considering a right-in, right-out would be beneficial at all for safety or for traffic congestion issues.
With the turn lane being there for the light, I think that's where you're gonna get that left in, is they're gonna be backed into the existing turn lane, not in any through lanes. So you won't, you won't be impeding through traffic because of the left turn lane that exists for the light. So I don't know, and I can defer to the applicant on their, you know, what their thinking is, but I know that it has to do with their trucks being able to get in and out of the site as well. The fire department wanted, I was looking for more of a raised curb and landscaping out at the, what we call pork chop that's out there at that access point, and the fire department had stated that they are concerned with that and wanted to make sure that it's not a raised, but it's just a truncated dome kind of, where it's the small concrete like you have at Speedway, because they need that for their, you know, mobility around the site as well. For, to, I think to not allow left traffic, I don't think it would solve much because of that existing through, or the existing turn lane that's not impeding through traffic.
Okay. All right. Are there any other, when you were drafting this, were there any other thoughts you had on how to mitigate the impact of traffic around there? Because I know Beaver View is always busy, surprisingly, that back way to Kroger is always busy, and there's usually traffic already at that, backed up at that light. Is there any, did you guys have any discussions on how to mitigate traffic that?
Fortunately, I brought my assistant city engineer this evening, so I'll let him talk on the specifics of the engineering traffic.
To answer your question, Mr. Ayers, they did a traffic study as part of this application. That study was reviewed by Jeff Mormon, our city engineer, and myself. I reviewed it again today, just to brush up on it, since it's been a little while. And with that, what they found was there was no change in level of service at the intersection. The queue lengths would be able to fit in what is designed out here for that. With there not being a change in level of service, Jeff approved that that would not be an issue for this location, if that makes sense.
When you say no change in the level of service, you're saying there's no more trips per day?
There are trips per day, there are more trips per day, there's about 100 more trips per day in the peak, or I'm sorry, I'll have to look at it again. There's, there were more trips per day total. The turning movements had more, there was more turning movement, trips, from the Beaver View entrance there. So with that, with what I'm saying, with there's no change in level of service, the, they're both, they don't go down in level of service, they stay in the same level of service that they are with the pre-existing, or with the existing conditions with the no-build. So, does that answer your question? Randy, does that make sense? Okay, so, level of service, sorry, so level of service, there's different things. For the corridors, it's how much, how much traffic are you getting through, how much stoppage do you have with these, your queue lengths, and how long is it taking to get through a corridor? At an intersection, it's how much are the queue lengths backing up, and that will determine your level of service, for how long you have to wait at the light to get through it. When I looked at it, the, they did not change, like, I can't remember which one it was, I'd have to go grab it real quick. So with the queue lengths... Sorry, give me a second here while I look at it here. The capacity analysis showed that there was a minimal intersection change with the queue. We go from, we're staying in level of service C for PM peak and level of service A on Beaver View during AM peak. PM peak went from the no-build at, at opening at 19, I'm sorry, went from B to C on the 23, and then from 23 to 2,033, it stayed in level of service C. And actually, the queue lengths are shown to go up, or the level of service is shown to still be in that capacity, 25.6 to 27.8 with that. The capacity analysis showed that the study area operated efficiently in both peak periods on opening and the horizon scenarios. The site drive, intersections operate efficiently without roadway improvements being needed, is what was determined from that study.
So the answer would be no, you guys didn't consider anything else to mitigate?
To mitigate more with it, no, we checked it for the, to see what was required for the left turn. There was, there were warrants for the left turn in on Beaver View, so that, to get that stacking out of the through lane, so that way Beaver View could flow eastbound. So that was warranted, so that was added for that. And with that, it showed that we needed 100-foot, 100-foot lane for that. Yeah, with the 50-foot taper, which is the coming in there, and that did fit in that existing profile, except for the widening that we needed through that area. I do know that Jeff looked at the issues you were discussing about with North Fairfield Road, with the right-in, right-out, and as Randy had said too, that was determined that with his analysis too, that the right-in, or the full movement in would not create issues, but it did, we did discuss for safety issues that it needed to be a right-out only.
All right, thank you.
Before you walk away...
Yeah.
I'll have some more questions.
Sure.
Was there, in the traffic study, any conversations regarding the number of customers' trips, however you want to define that, and where they're predominantly gonna come from? Are they gonna come in from the right-in from Fairfield? How many left-ins were anticipated, and how many off of Beaver Valley?
There are, all of those movements were analyzed in that study. They, and they, that was part of that capacity analysis for the intersection and the different, and the two entrances there as well, to see where they were coming from. We had... so from the study, it found, make sure I'm saying this right. From north, from the north, it was about 40%. From the south on Fairfield, it was about 50%. And then from the east was 10% of the trip generation.
Is there any concern that on the left-hand turn in, from where the, where the, the turn lane is, cars who are trying to access from a left turn in, would they be able to quickly get out of that turn lane and into the, the business? I'm thinking about those individuals who are in the left-hand turn lane, but they're actually trying to turn left on Beaver Valley, but they're trapped behind a vehicle, and that could create a, a safety concern. Did you have any concerns about that?
You're talking about the eastbound left turn lane?
Correct.
Okay. That was, in the capacity analysis, it showed that that, what is shown on the plan there is what was needed for that. So there would not be issues during those peak hours for the trips that were generated for that business.
And so you're confident with the, the results there, that?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'll turn to staff. So on the drawings itself, it demonstrated that there was one handicap spot. Can you talk about whether?
I missed the one that's onto the, there's one on both south side and one on the west side. So I apologize for that. There's actually two handicap parkings.
Okay. I only identified the one, so I must have missed that.
Yeah, at first I did, but you could, it's hard to see. But up near the, at the southwest corner of the building, you could see that there's that landscape island, just to the north of that.
Call me unobservant, but I'm not seeing it.
Sorry. Yeah, one here.
Okay.
And there's one here. I did, I missed the one up by the landscape island first myself. That's why my narrative says one parking space.
Got it. And when it comes to the stacking, because I share the same concerns as many of the other commissioners, what is your understanding of the service times to? I know you talked about that they do predominantly order ahead, and so it's a, it's a quick turn. Was there anything either from the applicant or in your conversations with them regarding kind of what their, their standard for turnaround times to move a car through the drive-through?
They provided a, a small narrative on how their drive-through works. And I put it in.
And we can defer to the applicant if.
Yeah, it just, I mean, they were saying very short.
Sure.
And rarely experience backups.
Can I ask the same question of the applicant, please?
So again, our drive-through business, the way we intended to work is for customers that might have children with them, or maybe they're high-risk or things like that. We just want to offer that as another way for our customers to order. There is an order point that's not, it's not vocally done. There's actually a touchscreen, just like we have inside. It's outside, and they can use that to fully order our full offering. But really, our intention is to have customers order ahead. When they order ahead, it can, I mean, they literally pay on the app. It's just like anything else you do with order ahead. And they can come up to the window, and as soon as somebody has the order ready, they're out the door. If they order at the point, it's probably three minutes. We do less than 10% of our food sales business through our drive-through. We are not McDonald's. We are not Chick-fil-A. We don't do 90% through our drive-through. It really truly is around the 10%. And then we've looked at data from across our platform, and it's really in that 8 to 10%
Okay.
of our overall business for the, for the restaurant.
And, and so is that a corporate standard, that three minutes or less to, to serve, or?
No, I don't think, I don't think that is a corporate standard. I don't think we have any standard like where we're timing our employees. Is that what you're asking?
Sort of. I mean, because there's a, there's part of our, our regulation that talks about how quickly it takes for you to service a, a customer to how many spots or stackable locations you need to have to make sure that it's adequate. So that's, that's mostly what I'm asking is, is kind of either on average or what standard you have on being able to turn a customer who, who is ordering in your, in your drive-through.
Sure. I don't have information on whether we have a corporate standard or what the, the maximum weight time is. I do know what our average is from studying it, and it's right around that three-minute mark.
Okay. Thank you. One more question for staff. Sorry, I had a lot today.
That's all right.
In answering to Mr. Loftus's question, you talked about there's going to be a stop sign. And I don't know that I was fully tracking what you were talking about. And so I was hoping that you could re-explain that.
Sure. There'll be a stop sign to come out of the site. So you'll have to fully stop before you can proceed onto the roadway. So with that, and there's a stop sign at this location too, at the existing back access to Kroger. So you'll be able to see, it's not a free flow of cars. I mean, you'll, you'll be able, if you're parked here wanting to come left out, and you see somebody parked here coming to left out, you'll, you'll get a glimpse of, you know, where they're going and their movement, and whether or not they're heading left. And there's, it's about 60 feet of distance between this roadway and this roadway. So you'll, you'll be able to get a judgment because there's stop signs at this location, and there'll be one at this location.
Okay. And, and just so I'm 100% clear, the existing entryway off of that back road into, from Kroger, that's going away?
Correct.
Okay. No further questions?
Thank you. Don't run off.
Yep.
I've got a couple of, a couple of questions for staff, and then I've got one or two for the applicant. I didn't see it in the, in, in the paperwork that y'all gave us, but since this is a, a gas station, are the catch basins for the stormwater runoff, do they have the oil separators in them?
They'll have to meet all EPA requirements.
Okay. Because this is upstream from Little Beaver Creek.
Right, yeah.
And it's kind of, it's kind of sensitive. And I know we've looked at this with the shopping center above it. So we definitely need to keep an eye on this. But that, that's part of the standard.
Should Plan and Commission recommend approval and City Council approve this, this development? Then the, the next phase for them will come up with a finalized engineering set of plans that needs to be reviewed by the engineering department. And that's when they get into the real detail of how they meet the EPA water quality standards and all the grading requirements. And we get the final, final details flushed out.
Now, if my memory serves me, there is already a left turn lane that runs along there that allows people to left turn into the driveway that goes up to Kroger's, isn't that?
Let me pull up an aerial.
Or is it?
That might not be an easy one to see.
No, there isn't.
That's why we're.
There is, but there is a, you are planning a turn lane here, I see that.
That's correct.
Does that require any widening, or is it?
They'll be able to use the existing roadway. I mean, there's, the, the right-of-way is a little.
Fuzzy.
Right out there. Correct. And so they'll be able to use the existing right-of-way to make sure they get that, that turn lane in.
Good. The, the only other concern I have is we're talking about impervious surface. And it seems to me we've got 11 more parking places there than they really need, or than is required, I'm sorry, than is required. And could you put up the drawing that shows the southern edge of the property? No, there you go. In the far southeastern corner, other, other east, that's the best. There we go. The, nobody going to use those two parking places. In the first place, you're going to have to back up into traffic queuing in the line. I think that could, that could be a little more landscape area and a little less asphalt.
I, I'll defer that one to the applicant.
Okay, I'll, I'll address that to him when, when I have another couple of questions. And also, the, the radius curve in the southwest corner there, is that something that the, either the engineers or the fire department put out as a, as the minimum turn area for their big trucks?
They'll need to get them and the tanker trucks to be able to get in and out of the site. And these are, these three areas are the pump, the air fuel, the air pumps.
Okay. I just, I thought, okay, I see them now.
Yeah.
I, I thought maybe that could be pushed out a little bit. But that, that southeast corner, I think, could be, could be radiused off and get a little more grass there, because nobody can use those two parking places.
It would be the last ones used, for sure.
Correct. Yeah, right across there, where those two parking places are shown. And that would give us a little more, a little more pervious surface than, up at, up at a few percent anyway. Now, I've got a couple of questions. Thank you. I have a couple of questions for the applicant, if you would. Will this be 24, 24/7 operation?
Yes, this will be 24/7, 365.
Okay. I kind of thought it would be, but I, I figured I'd ask. Do y'all have any, any heartburn with losing those two little parking places in that car? Nobody going to use them anyway?
The only thing I'd like to point out. So in that calculation for the parking, that does include everyone at the fuel pumps, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, that should be correct.
Okay.
So those two spaces are, are absolutely going to be used. And primarily, our plan was for employee parking.
Okay. And that, okay, that brings up my second question. And that is the percentage of, of your customers that are actually walking into the store either to eat or to buy something versus the, the percentage who come just for fuel, they gas their car up and go. Do you have a, an idea of that?
Give me one second. Let me see if I can.
Are y'all kind of a smaller-scale buckies? Where you're going to get a lot of people in there?
I, I mean, there is a very high percentage of people that park in one way or another, either at the fuel canopy or at a parking space, and come in.
I hope they don't park under the canopy and block the pumps.
I would hope they don't do that. Yes. So I don't, I don't have any information on an exact number of people that
No, just, just from your own experience, ballpark?
80% come in.
Really?
70%. Yeah, I mean, it's either, hey, quick stop, grab some food, use the restroom.
Okay.
Grab a cup of coffee and come out. Yeah, it's pretty high.
Well, staff, does it, does that mess up their, their parking by taking those two places away?
From a, the sheer way we calculate parking, I mean, they're overparked based on the zoning code. But those are just minimum numbers. And a lot of, a lot of people, based on the knowledge of their own business, you know, tend to exceed those numbers quite often.
And just, just a comment, since there seem to be a lot of folks that are concerned about the stacking for the drive-through, did anyone consider running the drive-through clockwise? Where you would come in from the northwest corner, go around the building, and pick up on the southeast corner? Or is the window in the wrong place?
I think the car side, the side of the car would be in the wrong place, wouldn't it?
Right-hand drive cars.
We could have them back through.
Yeah, I guess that's right. I hadn't thought of that. It's been a long day.
It's okay.
Okay. Thank you, both of you. That's got all my questions. Any second helpings, gentlemen? Okay?
Hey, Randy. Sorry, I know you just said. So I just kind of, I know we've talked about stacking a lot, but I kind of want to go the other way. Like, which side of the building is the drop, the pickup window on?
It's on the north.
Yeah, so there's, but it's on like the northwest, right?
Yeah, you can see from the architectural elevations. It's a little easier to see. Sorry, I got to get through all this.
Because I guess, just my point is that you have five cars stacking to the ordering point. And then you're going to have more stacking, right, to the window?
Yeah, I mean, the, the order points around the middle or the north end of this building, and then you're going to come around, and this would be more cars stacked waiting for their food. We just, the way we base it though is from the first point of contact is where we start that five. But, yeah, the order, the pickup window is in this general area here.
And then the other thing that came up was, so I know, and you showed it in your aerial picture, but cars like to park for the bowling alley along Beaver View. So I know this would be more of a city thing, but I don't know if we're going to need to put up like no parking signs there?
Well, the, the challenge is some of that, when you're talking on the south side.
Yeah, yep.
It's, the right-of-way line, like, like Swiss State is a little fuzzy in this area. So some of that is actually, even though their parking lot looks like it ends there, this is private property along here. So, you know, if it becomes an issue and we're, a problem, then, I mean, it, it won't be up to Sheetz to be able to figure that out. It'll be a city issue.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, then I'm, I'm looking for a motion, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair.
Stereo.
Sorry, Nick, go ahead, buddy.
Got to echo here. Mr. Chair, I move to approve PC 23-1 with the attached 17 conditions.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Make an amendment to the drive-through condition?
I think I'm more comfortable on the stacking now based on the applicant's response and the knowing that the actual, because I was looking at the pickup window being on that side, seeing five, six cars. And that obviously would, would not be, would not.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, that's how we, the standard is how, where we do the measurements from the pickup, but that doesn't also take in consideration the cars that have, are waiting, have ordered and are now pulled forwards.
Right, sure. No, I think I'm comfortable based on the applicant and your response on everything. So, no, I'm, I'm comfortable.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
And I have a second. So Ms. Melissa, if you'd be so good as to read the roll.
Mr. Deiker.
Yes.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. And I look forward to seeing our latest business come to Beaver Creek. Okay, we have a second public hearing tonight, gentlemen. This is PUD 23-1, Dover Creek Technologies rezoning.
This is case number PUD 23-1 on an application filed by Dover Real Estate Investment Group, LLC, 2372 Lakeview Drive, Suite H, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45431. The application requests approval to rezone 15.184 acres from I-1 Light Industrial District to a CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development to allow for the construction of a multi-phase project that includes storage units, an office building complex, and a conference venue facility. The property is located on the southwest corner of Grange Hall Road and Research Boulevard. Further described as Book 2, Page 6, Parcel 15, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I'm sure there is someone here who is going to come tell us all about this. Step right on up.
Yes, sir. Thank you for receiving us today. My name is Dr. Lee Culver, the managing member of Dover Real Estate Investment Group, which is an affiliate company to Beaver Creek's Creek Technology, which is a government contracting firm that was established here in 2007. Dover Real Estate was started in 2017 with the necessity of holding real estate based on the growth and the expansion of Creek Technologies Company. So I have ownership of both companies, and I use the two companies interchangeable to deliver the services to the federal government and then also to manage the real estate. And so Dover Real Estate was established in 2017. And since then, we continue to expand the holding of real estate and the services that we provide to include commercial office leases, which is out of 2372 Lake, Lakeview Drive. That's the building right across from Mike's Car Wash off of North Fairfield Road. We've also expanded our services into new residential home construction in Trotwood, renovating homes in Riverside and Fairborn. And then we also offer lease properties of res, residential homes. And the purposes of our looking at this property on the corner of Grange Hall and Research is to continue the expansion of growth of Creek Technologies Company. Our continued growth has necessitated us to, you know, to look for other building spaces. And so when this property came to our attention, we were very much interested in it, looking away from another, you know, smaller property in, in Beaver Creek. And, and so this just creates the avenue of our continued growth and our success here as a, as a startup company in Beaver Creek that's continuing to show its success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Before you's an application requesting approval to rezone approximately 15 acres from I-1 Industrial to a new commercial planned unit development. Property under discussion is located at the intersection of Research Boulevard and Grange Hall Roads, this southwest corner of that intersection. As you can see by the aerial photo, the property is completely vacant. It's been used for many years agriculturally. It's been farmed, and it does have some significant portions that are densely wooded. A big part of that property is located within the floodplain. You can see the blue area is the 1% annual flood. So within that blue area, there's a 1% chance every year of catastrophic flood. Within the orange area, that is the 0.5% floodplain, so it's a half a percent chance every year of a catastrophic flood. So within that blue area, the city does have floodplain requirements that have to be met with any new buildings, any new development. That would either be elevating the land to two feet above the base flood elevation, which you can see there. It looks like the base flood is at 856. I can't see that far away, but, so they'd have to be two feet above that, or alternatively, they could floodproof the buildings to that two feet above base flood, which could be a little bit difficult, especially when you're talking about something like storm locks, you know, to floodproof every single garage could be very cost prohibitive. So they may have to look at elevating if they choose to take that direction. So the property is zoned I-1, as I stated. The properties to the north, south, and east are also all zoned I-1 Industrial. In your packet, there is a list of the permitted uses within the I-1 district. It is a pretty extensive list. There are quite a few uses. The I-1 and the I-2 zoning districts are most relaxed zoning district as far as the number of uses that are permitted, just based on, you know, the location of I-1 zoning districts when the city and their distance from most residential or most residential areas. So they definitely allow a lot more uses than you would normally see in most of our other zoning districts. As far as the land use plan goes, this property is within VPA 53. Again, your packet does describe VPA 53. It just goes over, you know, the location and the types of uses that are permitted. So that purple designation is research and development office, along with light industrial and high-tech manufacturing. The applicant's concept for the site does meet those requirements. And then as far as the, this is a concept plan. So again, this is just the PUD rezoning part of this process, and they would still have to go through the specific site plan process. So this is just very conceptual. You know, we haven't looked at any types of site plans. You know, some of this could happen, all of this could happen, none of this part of it could happen. So we're just looking at the allowed uses for the property, and that's it, the actual rezoning of the property. So what is being proposed for this commercial planning and development would be the ORP-1 uses, so all of the uses that are permitted within the ORP-1, which is Office Research Park District. There's also a list in your packet of those uses, and as you can see, the list is significantly smaller than what is permitted within the industrial zoning district. Additionally, within the PUD, we would also be allowing for the storage units as well, which the storage units are already permitted within the industrial zoning district. When we get to the site plan stage, obviously, one of the benefits of going through the PUD process is being able to limit the number of uses, but then also being able to have some control over the aesthetics of the site. So we would be able to have control over the way the buildings look, the amount of brick that's being used, landscaping, all of that kind of thing. And also with this, and one of the conditions we added, we can also specifically call out the area that would be for the storage units. So what we are looking at and what we are proposing, when the applicant came to us saying that they wanted to do self-storage on the site as well, is, well, let's try to put them in an area that would be the least intrusive on the Research Park. So that yellow box area would be the area that we would allow them to be, which would then, if you go look back at the concept plan, would mostly be shielded by the office complex, the conference facility. So coming along Research Park, you kind of, you wouldn't be breaking up that research feel with the storage units. And then obviously, you can see, you know, just to the south there, what those storage units would be backing up to, and then across the street from there is the Carter lumber. So, you know, staff feels this request is still in keeping with the Research Park, because this property is still within the Miami Valley Research Park, and so they still do have to adhere to the Research Park's requirements for aesthetics as well, on top of what we will have with the specific site plan. So we feel that the amount of regulation that can be placed on this PUD will still allow the applicant to do what they would like to do, but then also still allow the city to be able to ensure that it's a quality development. So staff is recommending approval with the five conditions in the attached resolution. And if you have any questions, I can answer them following public hearing.
Thank you. Makes it a lot easier when we get all the information. Gentlemen, I'm just going to open this. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. It was a tough day. It is a public hearing, and since I don't see a whole lot of people there, but if there's anyone who wishes to speak about this, either in favor, against, or simply ask questions, please step on up. See, I told you. Did we get any written input? Okay, last call. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and now I will open it, gentlemen. Just speak out.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair, for staff.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
When does the clearing and grubbing happen? Can it happen after this has been rezoned, or that we have to get into the SSP side before the clearing and grubbing could happen?
The clear, I mean, they could do that now if they wanted to, but they would need to get a grading permit, but as far as any other limits on anything.
There isn't, okay, there's no...
Yeah, they could go out there and start grading and clearing.
Okay. The only reason I brought that up is we had another potential storage facility up on Factory that completely grubbed out, forced all the deer out, and
And never...
Four years later, it's empty, and, you know, so, but, yeah, if we don't have any control over that, that was...
Yeah, I mean, ideally, I know that the applicants are aware that we would love to keep as much of those trees as possible. So our hope would be that they wouldn't just go in and clear everything out, so.
Okay. That was my only question. I just wanted to ask what the clearing and grubbing policy was. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So I have a question. It's my understanding per the resolution that we would be rezoning this ORP-1 with an exception to the uses to allow for self-storage, correct?
Not necessarily. We would be rezoning it to a PUD, and we're just using the ORP-1 uses as our guideline for what, for the uses that we would be allowing in there. So we're essentially just taking the, all of the uses in the ORP-1 zoning district and saying, these will be the uses that we will allow within this PUD. But the PUD is the zoning.
Okay, but...
And then also adding. Like, essentially, in a PUD, we could put whatever uses we want in there, right, when we're creating a PUD and deciding what uses we're going to allow. And we felt that the ORP-1 uses that are in our code go best in this area. But the applicant also wanted to, wants to have storage units, and on the site now, they are permitted to have storage units. They could go in and get permits and put in storage units right now throughout the entire site if they want to.
Sure. Yeah, and part of where my thought was going, and I think you answered it, was why wouldn't we subdivide the lot and have the uses differently? But that makes sense on the PUD, so no other questions.
Just to help me clarify, could you put up the drawing of the, right, no, there was, next, that one?
Okay.
Go back one. That, I seem to recall, there's an old railroad right-of-way that runs along the southern edge. Is that what that gray line right there?
I think that, yes, this along there.
Yes. If that's the old traction line railroad, who owns that?
Yeah, it may be the township. I don't think it's us. The city doesn't own it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the township may still own it.
That's the old DNX traction line.
An odd, yeah.
Right-of-way, and I just wondered, you can, if you look really carefully in the wintertime, you can see where it goes straight through there. But that is not part of this parcel, and it's not part of the parcels to the other, to the south.
Correct.
That was all I had. So, gentlemen, we are rezoning this, we're downzoning it actually to a PUD zoning, which gives us a lot more flexibility along with the developer to put in things that are good for them and good for the city. So that's the plus of having a PUD versus straight zoning. So, without further ado, gentlemen, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 23-1 with the attached five conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, and let's go for the roll here.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Decker.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0, and we'll be looking forward to seeing some specific site plans on this. That's a nice piece of property there, and I know you'll make it look good for us. We'll make you look good for us. Okay, gentlemen, we have one other item, and that is this Community Reinvestment Housing Council appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may know, we have a Community Reinvestment Housing Board that oversees our community reinvestment area program. I know that we've only met twice in the last three years, once to establish what we were, and then once to attempt to, or establish guidelines on how we would review applications. We haven't had any applications yet. Really, CRAs go hand-in-hand with, should there be an income tax in the city, but, I mean, it's not a requirement, but when we're talking about property tax, you know, negotiation, you know, there would have to be an offset on that, and usually that's an income tax. But we still have the board, and we want to keep the board because it's a worthwhile endeavor. And one of the, when it was established, one of the members was to be a member of Planning Commission, appointed by the Planning Commission, and as you may recall, back in 2020, Mr. Self was appointed to a three-year term, which is up at the end of February. And so we were looking for the Planning Commission to appoint one of you all to serve on the board at that capacity as well for another three years. So if you guys could discuss, vote, and let me know who, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate yourself, Mr. Self, to be the Planning Commission member.
I will second that motion.
Okay. General consensus?
Yep.
Okay. I guess I'd do it again.
We'll re-up you for another three years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And gentlemen, we are fresh out of topics, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I would motion to adjourn the January 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Don't fight over it.
Loftus got it.
You got it?
Got it.
Okay, and we are at 7:05. Thank you.